Started, I can call the meeting to order. Um, I will lead the pledge again if everybody will join me. This gets a little convoluted for those of you that are on here for the first time, just do your best. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. There's a chance.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. Liberty.
Justice for all.
Ready to, very good. Roll call, please Diane.
Ken Anderson is absent. Sue Philek.
Susan mute.
Okay, she's here.
Or can I unmute her? No, I can't.
I'm here, sorry.
There you are.
Bill Graberek.
Here.
Chris Mondi.
Chris, um, there he is.
There he is. Chris is here, but I, okay.
Got audio, Chris, can you, wait, I want to make sure we can hear Chris, because if he's got something to add to a conversation. Can you test your microphone, Chris? Uh, we've got, we got nothing. Oh, now you're on mute.
Yeah.
No, can't hear you. Nothing. Gotta love the age of Zoom. Will this ever end? Alright, Chris, we'll keep going with the roll call while you play around with your microphone there and see if you can get it. Maybe the, the microphone might be muted, check your, uh, on your computer, your microphone mute button.
Or just the volume sound.
Is there a third page?
Alright Diane, go ahead.
Alright, Pat Schuberg.
Yeah.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here. Alright. John, do you get any public comment? I didn't see any emails.
I did not. Let me check one more time. No public comments.
Alright, I have no awards or presentations, um, but we do have a lot of Boy Scouts on the call this evening, so if whoever is in charge of the group, I don't know if that's Mr. Gramley or somebody else could give us a briefing.
I'll speak real quick. Hi, thank you for letting us join you tonight. The reason we're here is we're, uh, starting a citizenship in the community merit badge. And, uh, one of the requirements is to attend a, a government meeting. And, uh, this seemed like the most appropriate place for us to come and, uh, and be a part of. Unfortunately, we can't do it in person, but it looks like we got a pretty good crowd here tonight. And, um, we're just gonna be here for about the first hour and take some notes and then we'll, uh, quietly slip out the door. So thanks for letting us, uh, join you guys.
Alright, good luck with your merit badge, guys. If you ever need anything, give us a call. I know that Mr. Nevenhoven will take phone calls all the time from scouts if they need help.
My pleasure.
As will I. Alright, I need a motion then to approve the omnibus agenda, which for tonight includes the village board minutes of December 7th and the executive session minutes of November 2nd.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schuberg, second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Graberek. Roll call vote, please.
Sue Philek. Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondi. Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, so Chris, we still can't hear you. Are you okay with going on this way? You don't have to try dialing back in.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, there you are.
Is it? Oh, okay, I got it, I fixed it. Computer tech today.
Uh huh. What'd you do?
Blaming the kids.
There you go. Alright, under mayor tonight, I have a proclamation to read into the record, which I will do as soon as I scroll down to it. This is the Village of Elburn proclamation, Elburn School Choice Week, where as all children, the village of Elburn should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas the Village of Elburn recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the Village of Elburn to be successful adults. And whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the Village of Elburn. And whereas the Village of Elburn is home to the Kalen School District, which has a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas the Village of Elburn has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Walter, do hereby recognize January 24th to the 30th as the Village of Elburn School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Now therefore by virtue of the authority vested in me as village president, I do hereby proclaim January 24th through the 30th as School Choice Week in the Village of Elburn, signed by me this 21st day of December. Alright, that is written to the record. Uh, the only other thing I had is I want to steal Diane's thunder. I don't know if everybody saw the email. But the, uh, current, uh, board will be seated for another four years, starting May 1st. As the three incumbents were the only candidates who filed, and I was the only person who filed for village president. So Jake, you got the scoop before anybody else on that one.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alright, that's all I have, uh, for mayor. Uh, village attorney, Bill?
No report.
Bill, village clerk, Diane?
Just wanted to add that there is the five-day business days where people can object to petitions, so, um, after December 29th I'll be conducting the lottery for ballot position, and then, uh, we'll be certifying with the county clerk. And that'll be it for this election.
Alright. Thank you. Village Diane, I, or village, village engineer, I think I saw Julie on here earlier. There she is.
No report.
No report. It's nice to see Anderson Road open. I'm not sure if it's had a chance to drive it yet, but, uh, looks good. Alright, John, administration?
Uh, tonight you have before you a plat of easement. It's for a waters, uh, off-site water main for Lennar, the Fox Point Development up on the north side of town. Uh, it looks like, uh, Mr. Rick Murphy from Lennar is on the Zoom call as well. Um, this extends a 12-inch water main north from our North Water Tower into their subdivision. This will provide one leg of a looping system for that subdivision. The other loop will go through, uh, well, it's Collin Street over there on the east side. Um, they had to go through, uh, the other side of Route 47. Uh, could not reach an agreement with the property owner on the east side. Um, but this may actually work out, uh, for the village because the, uh, there is somebody that is currently interested in developing, uh, the northeast, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of 47 and 38, so they'll need water as well. Um, but, uh, we would ask that you'd consider approving this, and if you have any questions, like I said, Mr. Murphy's on the line. And, uh, our engineer, Julie Morrison, is on the line as well.
Alright, do I have a motion then to approve the plat of easement for the off-site water main for Lennar for Fox Point?
I'll move it.
I'll move it, but I have a question once it gets moved so we can talk about it.
Alright, moved by trustee Graberek II was from trustee Wilson. Uh, will, uh, anybody have any questions or comments? Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, my, my concern was, uh, I know folks are looking at the, the western property there, but can we really grant an easement when, with, without whoever the current property owners are? I mean, wouldn't, shouldn't they be a, a party to the easement also? Or have some prior?
They are, there, there's signatures on the, on the easement.
Okay, well, I'm looking at.
I know that, that type is really small, but there is, uh, signature lines on there for the property owners. And Rick, do you have anything that you need to add?
No, that was it. It's just that, you know, you, you couldn't grant an easement, which includes property that's not our property. That, that, and, and, and again, it's pretty small print and I, I couldn't pull up anything on my computer, uh, so I could enlarge this, so, yeah.
And, and Bill, I also believe that when that property was annexed, uh, according to annexations, uh, we have to annex to the far side of the road so that would include the I dot right of way.
Yeah, when, when that gets, but right now there's no annexation until such point that somebody buys it, right?
Well, no, but I'm saying that on the east side of the road, we are annexed all the way up to the north, uh, end of the Fox Point subdivision. Including a single-family home just north of the tower.
Right, right, right. I'm, I'm just concerned about the easement that's running from our water tower up on the west side of 47 on a third-party's land.
Yeah, John, this is Rick Murphy. I can confirm that tho- those are signers to the plat as well. The owners.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think, Billy, you, you brought up now a question in my mind, that this easement, John, is in the Village of Elburn? Because of the other side of the road?
Yes, I believe so. I'd have to double-check, but I believe so.
Because I think to Bill's point, we can't get an easement, um, well, I guess we can, doesn't matter, does it? Doesn't have to be in the village, does it?
Yeah, Julie's shaking her head, no.
Okay, it's just on their land.
Me, me selling you a house that's not in the village, since, you know.
Well, I think when they go to build there, they'll have to bring everything in and, and why annex that in, but, but just to get an easement run through their property, I think we're okay with that, without it being in the village.
That, it, it was just my concern whether those property owners on the west side of 47 indeed approve of this easement grant, because you've just, you know, placed a, a burden on their property. Even though it might be a very valuable burden, it's a, it's, you know, it's an imposition on their property.
Yeah, I see, uh, Louise Callaway and Diane Meredith, they're both gonna be signing this plat, so.
Okay, and they're the owners?
Yes. What I can see here.
Okay, that was my question.
Alright.
And yes, we go to the west side of 47.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments on the plat or the easement?
I just, I just had one. It looks like we would probably cou- be covered. I just didn't know if this was something that I dot. I had a chance to look at just on the off-the-wall chance that they were to widen 47 north of 38. Is this easement potentially gonna end up in the roadway, or would it be far enough out of a unseen future writing? I don't know if anybody has that answer, just.
Yeah, is it, is that Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I kinda had a concern too, because they keep talking about they can't do anything through the village itself, but once you get north of 38, you know, and I don't know what they would do up at Lily Lake with, unless they tore out that, uh, that old railroad bridge. You know, you, you couldn't get four lanes. That was, that, that was a concern too I had, you know, what, what happens if that, because 80 feet, I don't know what you'd need for four lanes. And I know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, this is Rick Murphy here. Um, I just wanted to clarify, if we cross I dot, um, there's an application in for review for that work. Um, and the, the right-of-way is projected, the full width as it is to the south, and it is on our, our side, so it's extended beyond the existing, uh, right-of-way in, in preparation for the future. A dedication for I dot.
Okay, so should they widen the road, we won't, this won't interfere with, uh, that.
Well, it, yeah, if you remember, we'll, we'll, we, we won't be doing some improvements, I dot improvements, and you know, no one can say what I dot will do in the future. But this is the, the right-of-way that they've obtained, um, in, in the area. So I believe it's, um, something like 80 feet, a little.
Yeah, it's 80 foot for the.
Remember the, the, I might be wrong with that. But it matches what's down to the south by, uh, over by, um, um, 22 or, uh, 38, I mean, excuse me.
Any other questions, comments?
So, I, I know a number of years back when I was on the plan commission, we tried to see if we could get a bike path up on, along 47 and I dot is, they, they, there was just not a chance, because they wanted all their easement with no uh, no, uh, impingements on their ability to do whatever they want within that 80-foot strip that they have. That, that's why, that's why I was just curious about the water issue, you know.
But the water is outside of that area.
The folks that own the land on the west side of 47 have agreed to the easement.
That's correct. I actually have their signatures already.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, and I, I wasn't, and is that Mer- Meredith owned some of that?
There is a Meredith on there, yep.
Okay, alright, that was my question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Sue Philek.
Aye.
Bill Graberek.
Aye.
Chris Mondi.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, John?
Uh, nothing in this meeting. I have more later on in the committee of the hall.
Yes, you do. Uh, Tom, building and zoning? Tom, you're on mute.
No report.
Thank you. Doug, finance? Doug, you're on mute as well.
I'm attempting to get off mute, but the button didn't want to, um, cooperate. The Treasurers' report for the month ending November 30th is in your packet. Just a few words about that. Um, November is the seventh month of the fiscal year. Interest rates continue to be very low. In fact, they're getting lower than what they were, have been recently. Uh, we have a CD that will mature next week. A half a percent, and now that's gone down to 0.2% on the renewal CD, so interest rates are are getting low next, next to nothing, and, uh, so that, that's gonna hurt our, our investment income. Uh, you'll notice in the Treasurers' report that item Fund 56, the recreation fund, is showing some concern and, uh, the budget that was approved for the recreation fund is a deficit budget, meaning that it was approved with more expenditures than revenues, and so we're, we're seeing some difficulties now in that fund, and, uh, it has a deficit balance at the end of November. Part of the, of that is that we're continuing to spend money out of that fund, but we're not getting much revenue into that fund, so there's, one of the revenue lines is grant revenue. It's $200,000 on the, the last part of an Auslad grant. We haven't received that. And, uh, so, but, but we continue to spend money there, so we, we need to be really cautious what, what we do with that fund, because it's all, it's already in deficit, so just words to make everybody aware of that. Also, in the bottom half of the Treasurers' report, you can see where our deposits are at, their First Midwest Bank, American Bank and Trust, and Wells Fargo. And, uh, that's all I have on the Treasurers' report. Any questions?
No questions, but the thing that I would add about the recreation fund, uh, is that we've received the $200,000 for the Auslad grant, and then as we go forward, we're spending that money. And anything else that we expend, we also bill out to Shodine and to Blackberry Township, uh, for their portion of the, uh, $400,000, um, portion that was supposed to be split between the village, Shodine, and, uh, Blackberry Township. So that money is probably not showing up in our revenue line item, because recreation is funded by sales tax and video gaming tax.
Where will that revenue show up?
That, uh, Doug, does that show up in the miscellaneous revenue?
It's supposed to show up, you mean the, uh, where, where does the Auslad grant show up?
Well, the reimbursement from Blackberry Township and Shodine.
No, it, it shows, it shows in Fund 56 as, uh.
Reimbursement. It says reimbursement.
Okay.
But there's, it's all zeros right now. So have we not gotten any money back from any of our partners?
No, in fact, uh, Blackberry Township says that they've just about expended their, uh, their portion.
We've, we've gotten, uh, several, several, uh, revenues from Blackberry Township. I'll, I'll include that as, when we talk about the revenue and expenditure report. Uh, and, and we've also, that's, that's in the, the line that's called other revenue sources, when we get to the revenue and expenditure report. But we're, we're, we're still at, we're still at a negative balance in that fund, so. So, yes, we're getting revenues, but our expenditures are exceeding our revenues.
Which line items and how much has our partners contributed to the recreation fund so far?
We'll get into that when we look at the revenue and expenditure report.
Okay.
So, any, any other questions on the Treasurers' report? Alright, so are we ready to move on to the revenue and expenditure report?
Yep, go ahead.
Alright, John, can you share my screen?
Give me a moment. Go ahead and give it a try, Doug.
Okay. Now I gotta find the, uh, well, that's the Treasurers' report. And here is revenue and expenditure report. So I've, I've got a few things I want to talk about. And so we will get to Fund 56 as part of the process. Is everybody seeing my screen now?
Yeah.
Alright. Um, so, a few comments. We're, we're gonna spend a couple minutes on this tonight, because we're at the point where we need to spend a couple minutes on it. So again, we're at the seventh month of the fiscal year, that's at 59. Almost 59% of the year has passed. Tax are, these lines here, we're doing well on property tax. We've collected 99% and we've got a couple more distributions of property tax yet to come on January 20th and February the 1st. Those will be very small distributions, but they'll be distributions. Uh, road and bridge tax is, we're, we're doing well. We're at 104% of budget on the road and bridge tax. Utility tax for communications, we're low, we're, we're about 4% under budget there, so, um, that, that's something we're gonna need to keep an eye on, because, uh, you know, that, that's $117,000 revenue source for our general fund. Uh, let's look at sales tax. Sales tax is one of the big players in the general fund. Our budget is just a little bit over a million dollars. We're at 57.75%, so we're just a little bit under, under, but not too much under budget, so, uh, we're, we're, we seem to be holding our own okay on sales tax. Let's look at replacement.
Does that number have the extra 1% in it? Because I don't see anything in the next line.
Excuse me?
Does that number in, uh, uh, 333 dot zero have the 1% additional tax in it?
Not, not, not in the general fund, no.
Okay, we got that elsewhere, okay. Alright, thanks.
We shouldn't, we just left that account as an active account. That's why it shows up here, even when there's zeros all the way across. I'll try to remember to inact, inactivate that account, so it doesn't even show up. Uh, replacement tax we were talking about, so we're, we're a little bit below budget on replacement tax. Gaming income. We're quite a ways below budget on gaming income, and you'll recall that, uh, gaming was suspended for a time, so that's, that's why our gaming income is down significantly. The line we call other grant, uh, this, this is the RTA grant, which we haven't received yet, but we've received other money in that line, but we haven't received the RTA grant yet. I don't believe, John. Is, is that a correct statement? So, um, line 351 is franchise fee. Uh, we're, we're lagging about 5% on franchise fees. Building permit fees, we were way down on building permit fees. We're still down a little bit. We're, um, about 14% under budget, but it's a lot better than what it was, so it's, it's starting to, to recover a little bit. Impact fees are way down. We won't go over these individually, but impact fees, all, all three of them are way down. Here's a, here's one that's a positive, though. Court, court fines are up. We're at 93% of budget on court fines, and DUI fines, we're at 239% of budget. Now, this is a small thousand-dollar item on our, as a revenue, instead of $100,000, but but we're showing a good percentage there on that. 365 is court vehicle fees. We're at 8%. So the courts, the courts have, uh, been, uh, a, a bit unresponsive in awarding court vehicle fees, so we're, uh, that revenue item is way down. Brush pickup fee, you can see we're under, we're up on. we're up on other fees. And we're way up on miscellaneous income. And the reason for that is we got an insurance settlement for when Squad Seven was totaled. And, and that insurance reimbursement went into miscellaneous income. So that's, that's why that's 8,276% above budget. And then sale of asset. We did not budget any revenue for sale of asset. What this was, was the sale of the Renegade Trailer. It was uh, that the village owned and that was sold. And so that's where that revenue shows. So those are general fund revenues. Any questions about the general fund revenues? All in all, for the entire general fund, we're at 73% of budget. So that's, that's a good place to be at this point in our fiscal year. All right, let's look at a general fund expenditures. I just have a few I want to point out. Maintenance service of equipment, which is this line right here. We're at we're at 118% budget. So we're, we're going over on that. Look at 592 is general insurance. Now we're at, this shows at 60% of budget. Did I get the right line? Yes. So you'll see other places tonight that I'm going to show you where we're at or over budget on general insurance and our entire insurance premium comes due all at one time for the whole year. And the split this year, it, and the amount that we paid was less than what we budgeted. So as a whole, we're under budget. But the split between funds and departments was not the same as, is what we budgeted. So we may have a couple of departments that are over on the insurance line offset by other departments that are going to be under budget on the, on the budget lines. So when we amend the current year's budget, we'll get, we'll get those evened out the way they're supposed to be. But all in all, we're, uh, we're under budget for our insurance costs. Now that's property liability and workers' comp insurance is what that line is for. If you look at line 999, this is operating transfer out. This shows as a $2 million deficit because it, it's not reflected as being budgeted yet right here in this line. But that's the $2 million that we approved by resolution to transfer to the general capital fund. So there again, when we revise the current year's budget, it'll, it'll show an amount here in the budget column as well as the expenditure column. That's department, Fund 10, Department 10 expenditures. Any questions there? Moving on. Police Department is next. Uh, part-time salaries are at 75% of budget. So we're running a little high on part-time salaries. You'll see that we're running low on full-time salaries, but we're, we're going to probably bump part-time salaries a little bit when we revise the current year's budget. 592 is again, the general insurance. And you'll see here, police are at 111% of budget. Is what, how I was explaining earlier, some departments are going to be over, some are going to be under. But in the entirety, we came in under budget for this year's general insurance. I am. Um, look at line 660 ammunition. Ammunition costs have gone up considerably this year. So we're at 150% of budget. That also will be taken care of when we revise the current year's budget. All right. Those are my comments on Police Department. Any questions there? Hearing none. Department 30 is building and zoning. Building and zoning is exactly where they need to be for the year. So no, no concerns there. Everything seems to be going along fine. Next department is Streets. Just a couple of things I want to talk about. Streets salaries, part-time salaries are at 174% of budget. We're running high on part-time salaries. And Phil and I have spoken about that. And we've got some adjustments that we're, we're going to be making when we revise the current year's budget. Uh, let's look at line 592. General Insurance again, we're at 123% of budget. But that's just goes along with the other comments I've made on the insurance line. We're okay. Village-wide, we're okay on, on the insurance. All right, that's all I had to say about Streets. Any questions there? Let's move on. The General Capital Fund. This line right here, this revenue line is the other side of that $2 billion transaction that you saw on the general fund, the general operating fund side. So this is the capital side of that. So this shows it as a, as a revenue in the general capital fund. That's all I have on Fund 15. Uh, we don't, we don't get lots of activity. It's not an operating fund. It's a capital fund. So it's, it's not like it has activity every month or not very much activity every month. Fund 30 is the Water and Sewer Operating Fund. This gets a lot of activity on a daily basis. Our revenues are at 66% of budget. So we're running a little, we're running a little over. We're at 59% in the fiscal year. So we're running it a little bit over on the revenue side. And that's a good thing. On the expenditure side, this item is just as we transferred $2 million from general operating to general capital, we also by resolution approved a $2 million transfer from water sewer operating to water sewer capital. And that's what that line there shows. Part-time salaries again, we're running, we're running high on, in the water department. So there again, discussions are, are ongoing on that. And that'll, that'll be evened out when we redo the current year's budget. Line 592 is the general insurance line again. See, this one came in at only 81% of budget. So that's, so they're offsetting each other. Line 517. Now let's go to 43, 517, 43, 3043 is the Sewer Department. This line here, we're running a little high on. So uh, Phil, Phil is aware of the places that we're running high on and where we're running low on. So he's uh, he's, he's managing. Line 575. Solid waste disposal, we're running high. We're at 164% of budget on that line. Line 592 is the general insurance line. This one came in just a little bit over. And line 651, office supplies, we're running, we're running hot on office supplies. So I think, I think Diane must be hoarding the, the pens and pencils over there in public works. She knows I'm teasing. All right, that's Water and Sewer Operating Fund. Any questions about that? Let's move on then.
All these funds look like they're running under 50% expenses. So they're, they're all doing well, although there are a few line items that are over.
Yeah. Uh, Water and Sewer Capital Fund is Fund 35. And just one thing to point out, here's the other side of that $2 million transfer from Water Sewer Operating to Water Sewer Capital. So this is the revenue side in Water and Sewer Capital. That's Fund 35. Any questions on Water Sewer Capital? All right, Fund 40 is motor fuel tax. Line 345 on the revenue side, bond proceeds, we budgeted nothing for bond proceeds, but you'll see that saved $123,064 in that line. What that is, is the rebuild Illinois uh, bonds that the state of Illinois has made available to us. So, so that's where we're showing that. Phil, anything else you want to talk about on motor fuel tax?
Um, no, not, not, not really.
All right, let's move on. Fund 56 is Recreation. What I didn't say is the Fund 41 is SSA 1. Everything's going fine there. Nothing to get too excited about on SSA 1. Fund 40, 41 is SSA 1. Fund 42 is SSA 2. So nothing, nothing remarkable. Remarkable meaning it's out of kilter and we need to make a remark about it. So uh, it's, it's unremarkable in that sense. Fund 42, Fund 46 is SSA 6. And there again, nothing, uh, nothing unusual going on in SSA 6. Now it brings us to Fund 56. 56 is the Recreation Fund. Like I had mentioned before, it has a deficit, a deficit budget because it budgeted, it has $511,000 in revenues and $732,000 in expenditures. So it's a deficit budget of $220,000. Where we stand as of the end of November, on the revenue side, we're at 24, almost 25% of budget. On the revenue side, we're at 46% of budget on the expense side. So we're, we're, we're spending, we're spending it faster than it's coming in, I guess is the best way to say that. So there again, we've got to be cautious there. Now Pat, I think you had a question about Fund 56.
Yes, I did. I was curious about, so when we get revenue from our partners, which other revenue line items will that come into? Is it 397?
Other revenue sources.
Okay. Does that, the revenue sources that we have budgeted and what we have seen so far is that um, are we, are we being reimbursed equal to what we are requesting or on a timely basis? Or are we behind on any of our reimbursements?
What, what we're seeing so far in that line is uh, one, two, three, four, four different payments from Blackberry Township of $1,230, $3,581, $58,000 and some dollars and $34,000 and some dollars. So most, most of that revenue is uh, is coming from Blackberry Township. Some of the revenue, however, is from Shodine. So when, when we get revenue from them, whether it's Shodine or Blackberry Township, that's where it shows is right there.
And Pat, uh, Blackberry Township has been much more timely as far as paying their bills. Shodine ranges in about the 60 to 75 day per payment. Once we send them a bill.
Okay.
So Shodine is definitely behind.
Okay, good to know. Are they aware of that? Are they addressing it?
They are definitely aware of it and it's uh, shall I say institutional, the way that they process their bills.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on 56? We'll move on to 59. 59, uh, there's, there's very, very little activity in Fund 59. That's the wastewater treatment plant expansion fund. More than likely, this fund will be closed out at the end of the year. Fund 62 is the Transportation Fund. And there again, we have no budget for this fund. There's been very little activity in this fund. And this fund also will probably be closed school year. Fund 63 is the commuter parking fund or what we know as the Metro Fund. We're at 5% of budget on the revenues. Revenues are way down. Very, very few patrons are parking out there, although it has picked up a little bit recently. But it's, it's not near what it used to be. So our revenues are way down. We've taken several steps to try to cut our expenses there. So revenues are at 5% of budget. Expenditures are at 19% of budget. So we've been, we've been trying to, excuse me, trying to contain our, our expenses also in that. And Phil, I know you've made some changes out there recently to, to help cut down on expenses. You want to highlight those?
Yeah, I mean, we basically, we blocked off uh, all the parking except for the, the main parking by the building. So uh, even, even the metro workers, they've got to, they've got to walk a little farther now, but uh, we've got everything blocked off. And we're basically, uh, so far as the snow plowing, we did, we did it. It's a, it's by the month, which is good and bad, but at least we know what we're going to be spending at the end of the year. Um, and that should be cut way down compared to what we have been spending. Probably I'm thinking it should be at least $10,000 to $15,000 less uh, this year than what it has been in the past. So we're doing what we can. And so far as the lighting and everything, luckily we, I don't know about luckily, but we had spent quite a bit of money getting all the lights fixed. Hopefully they'll hold up because that's, that's a very, uh, that's a costly expense to the Metro. Having the lights fixed out there. So we're doing what we can.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Any, any questions about the Metro Fund? All right, let's move on. Uh, the next fund is the escrow fund and that's kind of a money in, money out. It's not really our money. It's kind of a holding fund for, for escrows. And there's been very, very little activity this fiscal year. Then down here at the bottom, if you'll look at, this is total revenues for all funds. So what this is So wh- what this is encouraging is that we're at a hundred percent of budget at the end of the seventh month. So on the revenue side, when you combine all funds together, we're at a hundred percent of revenue and sixty-eight percent of expenditures. So we're, we're we're, we're way up on revenues and we're about ten points, nine, nine points up on expenditures. So uh, we're, we seem to be holding our own in the entirety of the entire budget. Okay, that's, that's a lot more than what's your, what you normally get on the monthly revenue and expenditure report. But we were far enough into the fiscal year that I thought we should spend a little time on this. And you had some good questions. Are there any other questions? All right, that concludes my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right, uh, chief, police department.
Uh, just a couple of quick notes uh on this meeting. Uh, we're continuing the background investigations on the next three uh officer candidates for the full-time position. We did, uh, I believe I had it in the weekly update. We were confirmed for an academy slot in March. It begins March twenty-fifth. That officer would need to be at the academy on March ninth to do the state mandated, what's called the power test or the physical agility test. Basically uh that they have to pass in order to be admitted to the academy by the state statute. So we're continuing to move along for that. Uh, we hope to present uh some basic pa- uh background packets to the police commission still at their January twenty-first meeting. And our one um already sworn officer uh higher off of this list is Officer Nunez, who actually starts today on full-time status with us. He was a part-time officer already with us. So it's a really easy transition to just move him in to start filling that spot. So uh he is actually starting on that on a midnight shift tonight will be his first shift with us as a uh, in the full-time status. So we're working on getting all that finalized and finished up. And then we hope to uh have that other additional full-time officer, which had been budgeted for the November first starting. Will actually not be starting them until uh in March, the way it looks now. So uh that's all I have for this meeting. And like, anybody had any questions? Okay.
All right, thanks, chief. Uh, Phil, public works?
Uh, discussing the proven additional public works, uh labor's position. We originally, when the year started out, we had figured one new uh laborer, uh but with the COVID, we pushed that off. And we did go out for resumes and what have you to hire um uh to replace one gentleman that left and then uh to replace a uh, a new, I should say it'd be a new position. And what I'm looking at doing is putting in actually one more position, which would, you know, bring our total uh between the operator and laborers and bring us up to eight. One of the reasons uh this last time we had gone out, uh we've got a lot of good uh, uh, a lot of good people that that uh I think fit into the labor's position and not all the time when we go out to find a, uh, you know, a person to, to take in uh the, the, the labor's position that we find this good of uh help out there. I guess I said, should say, whether it's uh, you know, whether it's just a couple of dollars an hour more, that's interesting, more, more plea people, uh, I'm not sure. But we've had a, a good turnout with that. So with that being said, I'm looking, I'd like to hire one more. So that would put our total staff so far as operator and labor up to eight. Uh, it was not budgeted this year for the additional, for the eighth one. But I just looking at, it would be probably a, a nice addition. We've got a couple of really good candidates. So basically, I'm putting it out there to the, to the, uh, to the board and see what you thought and kinda go from there.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve the additional public works labor position? Do I have a motion to approve the additional public works labor position?
I'll make the motion.
Move by trustee Wilson, second. Oh, second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Schubert. All right, let's have some discussion. I'm sure there's questions for Mr. Phil. No questions?
Phil, it's part of your thought on here to try to find a way of balancing out the uh, the expenses right now for the part-time position?
Well, yeah, I think in the long, well, that's, it's kind of exactly right. Uh, so far as the part-time positions, they've worked out kind of well through this whole COVID thing. And uh, I mean, we've, obviously, we've been short-staffed. Um, and with the direction of, obviously of the board, uh, we have been doing a lot more of the work, the outside work. So I guess to answer that, that's kind of part of it. That's kind of the reason why I'm a little bit over budget on this part-time. I'm trying to fill in some spots, you know what I mean? And uh, you know, try to get the work done, I guess. Cause we've been down, we've been down pretty, you know, we've been down on help for a couple of months now. You know, not counting what we were going to hire, you know, after the first of May.
Would this um, um, would this, if you hired an extra full-time person, would you reduce the number of part-time people?
Um, that's something I'm gonna definitely look at. Uh, I think we could, if, with an additional full-time, I think that's something we can probably definitely look at. I think we could probably, it's a very good possibility we could get rid of, you know, I don't wanna say get rid of, taper off sharply uh some of the part-time because uh I think they would be taking in some of the, some of the work, obviously, you know what I mean? So whether we will even need part-time, we may not even need it after this, you know, this, this, this year for a while. There again, you gotta remember the village is growing. And I think at, at eight, I think this uh, I think we could, we could do pretty well. I think we're gonna be staffed pretty well for the next at least two years. And then with, you know, Lenar going in and if there's any additional, you know, uh subdivisions or that, obviously, we're gonna be gaining headcount. A lot of it, a lot of it even stands with, you know, even this, this winter of snow plowing. We're gonna be short on snow plowing. So that was the reason.
If we get to know.
Kind of in front of, and uh, you know, there again, we, there's, there's a lot of work in this village. You just can't quite get done, especially with five, you know, come to the plant operator, five people. So bringing it to eight, the total up to eight, we'll be able to get a lot more work done.
How does the additional head count fit in with the budget?
Uh, so far as this year, um, gotta remember, we saved, what, eight months of full-time? Because we didn't hire that one. So this year, I'm sure there's gonna be a, there'll be maybe a little bit more. But uh, this year, I think it would be pretty darn close so far as budgeted. Since we're, we've got basically, where we got fi- uh, four months, four months left of the year. So that gives you, you know, that gives you a total of eight months. Um, and then we should have budgeted for twelve months so far as the full-time addition. And then you've gotta remember, we, we lost a guy and that would have been for two months. So there, you know, exactly where it's at, I couldn't tell you exactly where the money is, but I think it would be very close this year.
And I was kind of confused on your, on your memo to us. It sounded, you know, at one point I was reading and it sounded like um you're requesting to hire the head count that was budgeted that we didn't hire. And then as I read further, it sounded like you're also requesting to hire actually two, a, two full-time staff.
It would be actually, what, from what we budgeted, it would actually be one because we had one gentleman leave.
Okay.
So, so you would have one gentleman that left. We had uh one that we figured on after the first of May. Okay, and then this third one, this would be a, this would be actually a new hire.
So it's.
When I say a new hire, this, you know, was it budgeted for uh a- at last, you know, May of twenty-twenty, you know, no.
Okay, so then it is two, two hires.
If I could interrupt there, it's, it's and two will be new hires, one of which new hires was budgeted for, but not yet filled yet. And then the, the third one is gonna be a brand-new hire that was not, not included in the budget. Is that, I think that's the, the fair way to say that, Phil.
Yeah, yep.
Bringing on this third one, though, you've got the money and what you saved in not paying the May first hire. And then the time that we lost the other guys. So you probably got about eight, ten months, ten months worth of salary budget full-time sitting there that would cover both of these new hires till May.
Well, then it's, what, what happens next year? Can we still afford the next year?
Well, that'll be in the budget ask, but uh, I, I, from what I've seen, I, I think we'll be okay with an extra person down there. That's probably more of a Doug question.
The, my preliminary analysis with hiring the positions that Phil has proposed, then I offset that by what we had budgeted but not filled. And what will the net cost to the village be to fill those positions in the current fiscal year? Net cost is two thousand, just a little bit over two thousand dollars, two thousand sixty-eight dollars to
Okay.
to fill all three positions.
Any other questions or comments on the Phil's proposal? If not, roll call vote, please.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Gribberick.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Onto the next one, Phil.
All right. Uh, discussing approval payout to Geneva Construction for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents. And this would be for our twenty-twenty streets program.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the payout to Geneva Construction from this year's streets program budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, one hundred, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schubert, second by trustee Gribberick. Any questions on the payout to Geneva for this year's work?
And just, just for the boards uh knows that uh, the only thing that really wasn't covered in this uh, in the road program this year is there are uh crack ceiling and routing. That's gonna be pushed off till next year and then we'll just probably double it up. And then the uh Geneva Construction said they would uh keep the same per foot price. And it was due, due to the cold weather. You know, getting the uh streets program out a little bit late and then it's uh between scheduling and cold weather, it wasn't a good idea. I uh, I told them that I'd feel better about it doing it in May or June than in uh November. So.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Gribberick.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Did you say something, Matt?
Aye.
Sorry. Matt, I think you might be lying a little. All right, motion carries. Phil, anything else?
That's it.
Anybody have anything for Phil?
Yeah, I, Phil, we, we got this trench.
Uh, trench box?
Yeah, is that when we dig a hole so that it doesn't fall in on the people or what?
Exactly.
Is that a new one?
That's a new one.
Oh.
I did shop it around. Um, that was a, that, I had the, actually the same, same one when I was in business. It's a, it's a well-constructed aluminum trench box. Um, you gotta ha- you, anymore, I mean, you've really gotta have for safety.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed.
With, with ours, the folks that plant at the trees, we got dotty trees and then, then tanager, whatever planted them. But there was no fall events. They got a couple of thousand bucks for each one. I don't remember the contract on that.
Oh, I think for uh, I think for tetinger to plant them, I think it was like a, I think it's a hundred bucks a tree.
Yeah.
To plant them. And then uh, so far as from dotty, uh, you know, obviously the prices vary just a little bit. Per, depends what type of tree and what have you.
Okay. And uh, and the hoop building, I know we had to put a down payment on it. How long is that before we get something?
Um, we got most of the blocks for the foundation. Um, we should have enough to put the foundation down. I would say you're probably looking, probably end of January, mid-February before that, that'll really take off.
Okay. All righty.
Anything else, Phil?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Phil. Bill, the bills list.
Uh, Mayor, I've reviewed the bills list and, and some of the questions I had on them, Phil, Phil addressed. Uh, and consequently, uh, yeah, I find the bills list to be in order and would move to approve said bills list in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand and fifty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Motion by trustee Gribberick. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee. Second by trustee Filic. Any questions on the bills list?
The, the biggest hunk was, of course, Geneva paving or Geneva construction and some other, you know, biggies. But that, that was the biggest hunk of it.
All right, no questions. Roll call vote, please.
Sue Filic.
Aye.
Bill Gribberick.
Aye.
Chris Mondy.
Aye.
Pat Schuberg.
Aye.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Any other business to come before the board? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Mondy, second.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Filic. Call in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed or adjourned, and I will call the committee to hold the order at eight twelve. Roll call, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson is absent. Sue Filic.
Here.
Bill Gribberick.
Here.
Chris Mondy.
Here.
Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here. All right, does anyone here wish to address the committee of the whole? John, you got any emails for committee of the whole?
None. No public comments via email.
No public comments. Uh, while we have a break, any of the scouts have any questions? Anybody have anything they wanna understand better before we move into some of this discussion? Cause this is gonna be a little bit of time here coming up. Nope. All right, guys are all good. Move on then. Uh, first up, future village boundaries. Um, John, before you get into that, I want to read trustee Anderson's input, just so everybody has it. Um, my hope is to follow, my hope is the following ideas will direct our board to look at this as an opportunity to make both communities a better place and those unincorporated Kane County secure in their desire to be governed by county regulations. Number one, I believe the boundary should be set as follows. Village of Sugar Grove, north boundary would be Crown Property and south. Unincorporated Kane would be Crown Property and north until Main Street. Village Development Property would be all four corners of Main Street and. Village of Elburn property would be all four corners of Main Street and Illinois Route 47 and north. My thought is we would create a 20 year agreement with three parties. Village of Elburn, Village of Sugar Grove, and County of Kane. The county has done such agreements with other municipalities. The Village of Sugar Grove will discontinue to create TIF districts that include Kane and school districts. In my opinion, the school district burden gets redistributed and covered by the other users in the school district. Number three, the Village of Elburn should be compensated by any land use that will put additional tax burden on the Village of Elburn, such as roads and village infrastructure and staffing. This could be done by monthly or annually paying the Village Elburn a portion of taxes generated by set improvements from the Crown development. The boundary agreement shall be reviewed annually, and if there are major changes by either party, they shall be reviewed and agreed upon. Uh, so that was Ken's input, and I'll turn it over to John to give us his piece of this.
Well, if you remember back, uh, 2013, 2014, uh, we had to do a FPA boundary study. Uh, FPAs are no longer a requirement, but we we have that map still. And essentially what they did is they told the state the areas that we would be able to serve with wastewater. And uh, that's the the big color map. Unfortunately, the map that didn't come through, uh, at least not on my copy, uh, just shows our boundaries up on the north side. And uh, right now, uh, we have Campden Hills to our northeast. We have a corner of property, uh, two corners that touch each other just to the east of Route 38. Uh, for us, that would be the northeast corner of the Shodine property. And then the property that's in Campden Hills, I believe that's the Village of Campden Hills, that would be for the Campden Hills. Or uh, I'm sorry, the Blackberry Creek headwaters in the uh, in the park up in that area. Uh, going south, we stopped the FPA at Main Street and followed along the north side of Route 88 when you go to the west. So as you can see, this is quite a large area uh, for us to serve. And uh, EEI put this together. They've got uh, sewer force mains in their lift stations in various areas on how this would all be could be engineered. So this has come about for a couple of reasons. One, Sugar Grove has asked us for a boundary agreement. And uh, I need some guidance as far as uh, where that boundary should be. And also, we have Campden Hills. Uh, Campden Hills has a slightly different outlook on the world than Sugar Grove. And I'll I'll call it my opinion, Sugar Grove is in expansion mode. Uh, they are trying to grow as much as possible. They, you know, they do have TIF districts. And Campden Hills is probably the exact opposite. They are not looking to grow. They don't want subdivisions. They are trying to maintain as much open space as possible. So we've got two neighbors that have uh, different views on what their villages should look like. You know, I'm I'm not going to offer an opinion on which one is 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 better. The one that I'm concerned with is what's the outlook for Elburn? What do we want to look like? Where do we want to grow? You know, do do we want to try to fill out this this big colorful map? Or do we have other ideas? I know that it's been the intent of this board and previous boards going back, uh, at least into the late 90s, early 2000s, uh, talking about the Emerald Necklace, uh, Blackberry Creek on the east and Welch Creek on the west, and trying to grow from essentially the inside out. We don't uh, or at least have not had the desire to uh, go well beyond our borders just to to annex a property and so that we could grow and bring in new development. That we'd rather do it around our fringes, so that way we could grow from the inside out. So really, what's what this boils down to um, is a couple of things. One, first and foremost in my mind is infrastructure. As we grow from the inside out, if we take a look at Fox Point, they've, you know, they're looping a 12 inch main. They're they're, uh, they've got a lift station in there and sometime in the future, depending on development, that will be abandoned. Uh, we've got road stubs going off to the east, so if that property develops, that those communities can be connected. If the property at the northwest corner of 48 and 37 comes in, the question for us as we're going through a planning stage and, you know, for the developer, and he's asking, where do I put my pipes and how big should they be? And how do I get wastewater down to the plants? And what other growth should I plan for? Uh, his property that he's looking at does not go all the way to the north where you have the uh, the county unincorporated, there's like a five or six home little subdivision up there on 47. Uh, his property does not go all the way to the north. So how do we accommodate that other 100 and some acres that are up there? How do we accommodate the area that's up to the northwest? So as these things are built out, we do need to make accommodations in these plans for lift stations. Uh, is it a 12 inch uh, sanitary sewer? Is it a 16? How do we, how do we run uh, forest mates through these areas? How, you know, what's the, what's the big overall plan? And at this point, that's what we don't have. So I'm, I guess I'm asking the board for one, you know, what's your philosophy right now? What do you want to see? How big do you want to go? Because we need to have that information as developers come in, and we can tell them with some sort of certainty, this is where we want to go. And then the other component is, and Ken's letter addressed this, where do we draw the boundaries for these agreements? Um, this is the first I've heard of Ken's uh, his comments down at the four corners of uh, Main Street and 47. I believe Sugar Grove already has a boundary agreement with Kaneville for at least the southwest corner. So, you know, we're talking about the county, we're talking about uh, Sugar Grove. We may also have to include Kaneville in our conversations as well, as far as what their vision is. I have a feeling that Kaneville is a lot like Campden Hills, is that one of the reasons that they incorporated was so that they would have the ability to control their own borders. Right now, I do not believe that they are any further, I guess that would be east of 88 with their borders, but I believe that area is well within their planning jurisdiction as well. So there's, there's a lot of questions out there, but it 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 comes down to what, what is the board envision? Where do you want to go so that we can make those plans as we go forward? You know, also in my uh, in my memo, I had talked about the unincorporated uh, county subdivisions. And I used Wynden Oaks as a, as an example. I would suggest to the board that we do not incorporate the unincorporated subdivisions. There's for for the village, there's really nothing to gain. And I used incredibly rough numbers for for my estimate. I took a look at about six houses, about what they pay in property taxes, added four and a half percent on that, and came up with a number of about $100,000 a year just for Wynden Oaks. You know, that would pay for a cop and a little bit more to hire on. But now we're talking about snowplowing, we're talking about maintenance of the roads, we're talking about maintenance of storm sewer of 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 the storm sewer swales. You know, so the further we get from our core, the more expensive it becomes. Will there be additional revenue coming in? Yes, of course, but will it pay for the services? Um, you know, this is one of the things that Phil talked about at the village board. You know, we have started to bring a lot more of these services in house. And so in order to provide that service level, we need additional people, and it won't be just in Public Works. It's going to be additional police officers, additional people in the police department. It's going to be additional people in finance. So, you know, as we grow, we're going to have to bring people on board as well to help service those folks. So, you know, it's a simple question, how big do you want to be? But there are just so many other things that are involved with saying, yes, let's add that subdivision, let's do this, let's do that, that we need to have a basic understanding of where the board wants to go so that we can start to plan for primarily infrastructure going forward and then uh, bringing in the resources to be able to service all those people. So, um, that's my statement, and Jeff, I guess I'd turn it over to you.
All right, so what I'd like to do is kind of go through the board and get everyone's thoughts, give everyone a chance to to kind of. And I've asked you the last couple meetings to think about this, where you want to go, what you think the right thing is. We've heard from Ken. Um, I'll go last, but we'll just go. Uh, why don't we just go right down the the old alphabetical list here? Uh, and Ken's not here, so I think that makes Sue next. So just tell us, you know, what your thoughts are, how you see this going, where do you want to see the borders? And and, you know, bear in mind, we're just trying to get the feel of the board so that when John and I talk to these municipalities, we 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 have an idea of what the board is looking for and and what we can, you know, work out with these other towns to see what is the right thing and see what would be acceptable to our board. So that's kind of what what we're surveying here. So Sue, if you want to start, please.
Sure. Uh, thanks, Jeff. Um, the thinking about this meeting tonight, I had some time this past weekend to be out and about, driving, doing errands, and thought of um, the land that encompasses what I kind of felt would be our borders. I really can't imagine um, the Village of Elburn extending themselves south of uh, Main Street Road. Um, I've lived in this community for a long time, so and seen a lot of growth in the time that I've been here. And just knowing, being a part of um, planning commission and being a part of this board and seeing what it takes to manage all of that and what we have now. It is a huge picture to think about. So, um, yeah, I would pretty much agree with Ken when he talks about the four corners down there. Um, and I think um, going north to um, again, 38 and 47 is being kind of um, you know, a little bit beyond there, there I can see growth there. I I understand that we need to think about going beyond that Emerald Necklace that we've all always talked about. But I can't imagine even going, thinking out 20 years, um, being much bigger than that north and south. I just think there's, it's such a big picture for me, a little bit overwhelming.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Bill.
Yeah, uh, well, again, back my days on the plan commission, I remember we met with the the county and regarding boundaries between Sugar Grove and and Elburn. And the county's position was Main Street, we're on the north side, Sugar Grove's on the south side. So as far as the four corners that that uh, Ken talking about, two of them are already gobbled up. You know, they're 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 not available. So we're we're left with heading north, it's just how far north of 38 do we want to go? How far west do we want to go? You know, do we want to look at the uh, that facility's planning area and say, yeah, we can go all the way out to uh, Francis Road. And and likely, the development's going to be, it's it's going to be limited going to the north. At at some point, you're 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 going to be bumping into land that isn't, you know, once you get past Beef Road, that that becomes a real problem as far as bumping into Lily Lake, though they don't really have any public facilities as far as, you know, uh, potable or wastewater treatment. I I I guess my feeling is if if the county is going to own or actually have the 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 control over Crown, and I'm not sure what that might do to Crown's intense intentions. As as long as we don't get burdened with what's presumably going to be for any logistical warehousing down there on our streets and probably over the Anderson Road Bridge, which might require you know, a a kind of a bypass around the downtown section, just listening to the trains come by here because they're only about 600 feet from me. You know, train traffic is quite a bit, I know stops the traffic quite a bit. So I can see the Anderson Road Bridge being a a supplemental route around the village, at least the downtown section, which means where do you exit? Do you go right up Anderson to B and come back out on 47? These are some of the things that I'm I'm thinking about. But growth, again, in the absence of, in the absence of big boxes or corporate headquarters, doesn't bring in the revenues to cover the cost of any single family home, a single family home or any, any, you know, residence as such, doesn't give a return back to the village to cover the services that are required to to maintain those. And uh, I, once you start spreading out too far, that cost gets even greater compared to clustering around, you know, a central core. That's kind of my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mondy?
I agree. I don't think I'd go past Main Street. I kind of like how it is a little smaller, growing out, keeping it, you know, what we can afford and easier. You know, going that way. I don't know, I mean, it's I'm sure it's girls going to happen and it's going to get bigger, but I like keeping it small.
Okay, thank you. Chris, Pat?
I um, I go back to my time on planning commission like Bill and even Sue. And I think about, we had, I I remember a meeting we had with NIPSY. Boy, if that's not a group from the past, uh, where we talked about the um, the quantity that we could absorb within our water and sewer system. And it was like, I seem to remember it's like 24,000 people. So when you think about 24,000 people, how big would that have to be? I don't think we want to grow quite that big because if there's anything that we hear from the community, the community likes a smaller um, rural country fill of our community. That's why people move here. So I don't know that we want to um, grow past Main Street. It's just concerning to hear that, you know, four corners, you know, a lot of the corners at 447 and Main Street are already spoken for. I think I would not want us to go past Main Street. I've always thought about Main Street to the south and Beef Road to the north. It's kind of what we've always talked about. I'm not as clear east and west, how far we go. Um, if that goes to, you you know, where that goes, uh, if it's Anderson Road to the east, if it's a little bit farther beyond that, but then you're getting into Campden Hills to the west. Does it go out to Francis or Meredith um, to the west? There's kind of thing within that that um, more compact area. I think it's important for us to stay within what we can afford to grow. Um, I I certainly hear uh, and I respect the thoughts of you grow too big and now you're adding on uh, not only police and public works, but equipment and facilities. And if it's not within businesses to help balance out those infrastructure costs, you're, we're putting growth on on homes. And that's, and that's an expensive proposition. So I I guess, long and short, I'd like to see us go to Beef on the north and Main Street on the south, uh, east and west. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Pat? Okay, thank you, Pat, Pat.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have to echo a lot of what's already been said, um. As far as how far out. I'd be comfortable planning, you know, our potential reach, um, I do really appreciate that. Map that was put together with the potential lift station locations. And force main sizes, I mean, that's, that's a really simple read for me, um. But I I would, I don't know that I would really support anything in the future that would. You know, have us drive, driving or having village staff driving out to support. A development in the far reaches of this development with nothing else in between. Just really going with our building from the inside out and if. Twenty, forty, hundred years, we make it all the way down to Main Street, then then we make it, um. You know, so it's, it would be nice to try and, uh, like John was asking. To be able to give developers some of that insight, um. You know, to at least what the future could be. Cause there are some communities that are pretty well built out that are spending a lot of money now after the fact. To make all that work as they develop west. Or not west, but east, west, north, south, as they get further away from their, you know, what originally was their. Development and i- it's pretty costly to make it all work, you know, sixty, seventy years later.
Okay. All right, so before I I give you my thoughts, um, I just want to take a quick survey, so a year plus ago. Crown Development asked us if we would be interested in annexing in their land. And they were gonna try to do the the three hundred foot strip or whatever it is down south. On the east side of forty seven through some farm property. And at that time, when I brought it to the board, just for a a opinion, to see what people thought, it sounded like. We were in favor of at least listening and see what comes out of it. Uh, obviously, we haven't heard from them since then, um, we've been asked that question many times. But I'm getting the feeling tonight that, um, that that feeling amongst the board has changed, I've heard Main Street. Uh, pretty much, I think, from everyone, so are we, are we kind of backing off on that? Or, I mean, cause once we get into this agreement, if we, if we get into agreement with Sugar Grove at Main Street. Uh, that agreement can stand up in court and has in the past. So, you know, we we sign up for that, that's it, if they go down and and Crown comes in. And even if it comes in as a county development, there's a lot of impact to this village as far as traffic. Um, I mean, we've seen it already since the interchange has opened, uh, crime is kind of going up a bit, we've had a lot more. Uh, car burglaries, people, you know, getting in and out of houses, um, and I would expect. That when, when, if Crown goes in with a warehouse developer, we're gonna see a lot of truck traffic coming through. Which at some point, then we have no control over other than they're coming through Elburn because they're going to eighty eight forty seven. So I I guess I'm I'm curious to know if everyone's backing off on that, wait and see what happens with Crown kind of position. And we want to go forward with something along Main Street? Or are we, do we still want to wait and see what Crown has to say, uh, just, you know, feel free to jump in and add your comments here, cause I'm I. This is something that John and I really need to know when it comes time for us to talk to Sugar Grove.
Well. Yeah, we, we pretty much know what Crown wants to do, but is it? Even with some sort of TIF money that's coming to us, is it gonna be meaningful money? To have that much territory because. Once it's annexed in, everything between, you know, our current borders down to Crown is kind of. Open, uh, auction for anybody that wants to come in with highest and best use type of. Argument against the farmland. I mean, that's what happened when, when, uh, uh, Hughes Creek was annexed in. And there was, you know, six hundred and some acres of farmland between Elburn and Hughes Creek. So they could get a liquor license and then we had inland come jumping in with. Wanting to build something in the area of, uh, oh God, sixteen, eighteen hundred, single family homes.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and and there was a court battle that we spent a hundred thousand plus on it. And until B and B came along as sort of the white knight. And and, uh, took over, you know, bought the land and started to develop Blackberry Creek. But, uh. Yeah, so, yeah, I a- and I remember Sugar Grove, when I, you know, I've been out here, what, forty one, forty two years? When Sugar Grove was really not much of anything and, uh. They were annexing whatever they could, so you saw buildings kind of going up in the middle of nowhere in some commercial. But don't forget, they have an airport and they have a community college. And, uh, so they've they've got some. Amenities that we just don't have. Or even the possibility have and, you know, uh. And so. But I remember the the management issue they had because. People would come in and want to put in subdivisions, whatever, there were a couple of them that really didn't turn out too well with flooding issues. And all of that down in Sugar Grove and you don't want to get. In the same type of position where you've got so much land and you can't even manage the development of it. That that's my concern, too much area, you know, within your borders. It it requires extreme. Care in in managing. Any, any development because. Developments oftentimes are tenuous things that, uh, don't work out, I mean, how many times have we? We had, uh, oh, a couple of major. Proposals in the La Fox area. And I forget what the names of them were, but you know, they wanted to develop one, what was it going to be, five thousand acres? And then there was another one that I know I had worked on.
Grand, grand something?
Yeah, yeah, but there were two of those that came along and just ended up. Petering out, failing, you know, bankrupting, whatever, they just never went anywhere. Cause it was too large. An area to meaningfully manage it. With the resources that were available.
Have thoughts on that?
My understanding is that if we. If if we do a boundary agreement to Main Street. And I think first of all, we have to do what's right for us, that's. What we do for for a boundary agreement needs to be beyond what's going on with Crown and Sugar Grove and whatever else. Um, certainly that has an impact because of potential monies and things like that, and Bill, I I certainly agree with you. Are there monies that are significant enough that, um, make some of the additional expenses? Balance out, but who knows, we don't have a crystal ball enough to go to understand. What that would actually be, you know, they, we've seen all kinds of proposals that look great and grandiose and, you know. When push comes to shove, it doesn't always come out the way you think it's going to. So if we, if we go to Main Street, that really pushes, if Crown wants to do anything, they need to go back to Sugar Grove. And do something with that, or what does, you know, Crown needs to take care of whatever business they have. Again, I I think we have to do what's right for us, um. And and I, one of the principles I always learned, and I learned it the first time I was on planning commission, when I first started and it was Blackberry. Uh, Bill, great reminders on inland and Blackberry Creek, you know. Basic principle, you don't really want to annex inland that you don't have a plan for. Cause that's where you can really get into trouble. So I do have concern about, you know, we go along with annexing us all in and. We're really. It is that, are we, are we putting? Are you putting out more than we really, than we can bargain for? So I guess I've changed my tune on being interested in annexing all this in. For some warehouse development done in Sugar Grove.
Okay, anyone else have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, when you mentioned earlier, Pat, you know, yeah, to echo you saying that. One of the biggest reasons people come out to our community to live here is that it has that country feel. And why people have stayed here for years and years and, um. I think that is something we need to try to stay committed to to maintain. That we've had this vision of building from in and outward. And I think, um, we should hold ourselves to a high standard of of keeping that ideology for our community. I think it would be smart, um. You know, that you go back to that, bigger isn't better, always better, um. I, you know, I err on the side of caution and and everything I do in my life and my decisions and things like that, so when I think of. Whatever we decide is is for this whole community, not just about me or what I think, so. That's, that's how I feel.
Chris, Matt, you guys have anything you want to add?
I'll just throw out, I mean, regardless of. Who owns that property and wants to do what with it at the interchange. I just never had any desire to have essentially a remote Elburn so far away. I just don't see how it could ever be financially. Beneficial for the village to take part in any kind of development like that.
Okay, Chris?
I agree with Matt. I don't think it would be worth it, it costs way too much more money in the long run.
Okay. All right, so my thoughts, I'm just so everybody is aware, um. My thoughts pretty much line up with Ken's, cause he and I talked some of this through and I have met with the mayor of, uh, Camp Town Hills. And they were not interested at all in a boundary agreement with us till I told him some of our thoughts on what we wanted to do to the south. Or what we were going to propose, uh, with, as Ken mentioned in his letter, the, uh. The county, you know, that land staying unincorporated, uh, north of eighty eight. Um, so these are some of the things we'll talk to both our north and south neighbors about. And of course, John and I will bring back, you know, what what, where we end up and, uh, we'll see what the board thinks. But I think we've got a good feel, John, do you have any questions, are you comfortable with what we've learned tonight that we're we're ready to move forward?
No, uh, you know, a lot of what I've heard, uh, it makes sense, uh, Beef Road to the north. Um, Main Street to the south, we're we're still kind of unsure going, uh, to the west. Um, at the corner of Harley and thirty eight, um, on, uh, just west of suburban lawn. That parcel is in Camp Town Hills, uh, but everything else going west is, uh, unincorporated. Um, you know, I think even trying to get out to Harley would be a stretch. Um, and it it's kind of the same thought I had about going west, um, to Francis. Uh, on the south side of thirty eight, you have, you know, um, Elburn Woods, you have a unincorporated subdivision back there. You've got a large horse farm on the north, you have another, um, you know, large unincorporated subdivision off of, um. And it's Land Rose, uh, where you get out to, uh, out to Francis. Um, you know, and then you take a look out on Kesslinger Road, um, you know. You know, where do we stop out there, you know, i- is it Francis? Um, or is it someplace in between, and you know, and right now, I don't think that those areas west of us. Are under that great of pressure to develop. Uh, what I see is the the greatest areas to develop are going to be north and south along forty seven. And to the east on thirty eight. Um, thirty eight, right now carries a lot more traffic than forty seven. And so that's where the retailers are going to be looking, how many cars go past her on any given day, what's the density, what's the market, how much? How much do the people in this area have to spend at my store? And you're gonna find that more along thirty eight, um, at least as far as retail. Um, you know, there there has not been any interest. Going east and I doubt we're gonna see anything, um, in the next ten years going west. But if we don't start to plan for it right now, and it and it really is, you know, the, this board. Will set the tone at least for the next ten years. You know, what does the next ten years look like? Got no idea, you would ask me a year ago what twenty twenty looks like, I would have been way off. So, you know, I think everybody's crystal ball is a little bit fuzzy, but at least, uh, you know, with. The board setting these boundaries, you know, they're definitely something that that we can work with, something that we can plan for. And it it will be easier. To deal with a developer saying, you want to be out there, go talk to the county, that it's not something that we want to do. Uh, you want to butt up against our our existing infrastructure, well, then we can talk and we'll work it out, um. And, you know, earlier I talked about, you know, the difference in philosophy down at Sugar Grove versus Camp Town Hills. And I think we're kind of a blend of both of them, you know, Camp Town Hills loves their open space, it's what they want, one of the reasons why they incorporate. And, you know, and and keeping. Elburn, the 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 beautiful island it is, where we really don't have neighbors, I think is something to hold on to. It it is really what makes us unique and special, so, you know, having that. That philosophy going forward, I I think that's something definitely that we can work with and communicate to anybody else that wants to come in here. Uh, you know, you don't want to do it our way, you don't want to keep this town special, you don't want to, you know, add to the, uh, to what we have. If you just want to make it another generic subdivision, find someplace else to go, go, go talk to Montgomery, Oswego, Yorkville, all those folks. And, um, Elburn can take a pass.
Yeah, we, uh, you know, if the county, if it if it's going to be unincorporated and the county wants to do something. You know. I would want them to take Anderson Road, you know, between Kesslinger and all the way up to Beef. And that becomes theirs, but particularly the bridge, because I really never wanted to own that bridge. And and if there's any increase in truck traffic, regardless of what other people have said. That's going to be a route that people are going to take, particularly if there's a, a, uh, traffic signal at thirty eight and Anderson. They'll, they'll want to probably go right up to Beef and then get over on the Beef, so I I can see. As a future where where Anderson. Actually can take, you know, some of the drain off the truck traffic through town. And, uh, get up to Beef with a traffic signal at Beef and forty seven. That's, that's what I, but I wouldn't want to own the bridge or have the maintenance issues of the bridge. I would rather see that back with the county.
That's a good point.
And let them do what they want then, but they they would have to. Have that as some way to not. Run all the traffic through the middle of our our village because. That's the real attraction, what what we have as the, you know, the special places, whether it's Reams or Schmitz or. You know, Corner Grind or the Apple Orchards to the, to the, to the, to the west. You know, we we've got a lot of assets that we really haven't been. Pushing, uh, you know. More, uh, interest in in the village. More interest in, in the village. We, we, we're the end of the line too with the commuter service, you know, we. We can bring people like. It did in the old days where you took the streetcar out to the, you know, southwest suburbs to the picnic groves and stuff. Because that was the relief from, you know. City living. I mean, we, we can have that same thing. Plus we've got tremendous amounts of stormwater issues. This is all glacial silt stuff, you know, we, we've got a lot of wetlands and those wetlands have value. To, as open space and they can also be. Sold off for developers that, that want to seal up some other wetlands. So, you know, there, there's. There's value in the agricultural assets of. This village particularly. To our west that we should consider. As, as a meaningful asset as opposed to, we're not going to get the big box stores as easily as we once did. You know, once Amazon and what's his name owns the world. You know, it's, it's. It's going to be some sort of destination place where you're, you're coming out for. You know, a pleasant environment, a friendly community, but also. A place where people will want to stop and perhaps visit and spend some money in. And not homogenize it with, with just franchise eating places.
Okay. All right. So my plans on going out to County Line Road and up to sixty-four, down to eighty-eight and east of Mill Creek, we'll put those on hold. Don't write that down, Jake. All right.
Originally, I thought it was a good idea, you know, but in reflection. Not really.
Okay, all right. We'll move on then and let's talk about mowing village-owned properties there, Mr. Phil.
Yeah, I'm just looking for some direction by the board. Is this something we, we still want to do it in-house or do we want to? Outsource some of the mowing? I'm kind of torn. I mean, especially with an added, with the added help, can we still mow? Yeah. Right now it takes approximately two and a half to three days for two labors. To do the mowing that we, that we do in-house. So I'm just kind of looking for some direction by the board. Is this what we want to continue doing or? Would we rather put our efforts a little in else, you know, in other areas of the village, I guess is what I'm saying.
Where did you get these prices?
The prices I got was from Tattinger and he had said that, you know, these are. These are just estimates. He's of what he thinks it might cost. He told me now, Chris, you'd be. You're probably more, more attuned to it. He said that if they were like, you know, like the open areas, the three to five acre ones, they're getting like sixty-five and eight. Sixty-five bucks, I believe it was an acre or whatever to mow. Does that sound about right?
To me, that sounds high. I mean, I got out two thousand seven and I was only getting thirty-eight bucks.
Yeah, yeah. And, and there again, these are just, this is just a quick estimate what he had given me. There's. There is around twenty-eight acres that we have and then you got the treatment plant. So. I'm just. We can continue doing business as is. Or does the village want to? Does a village want to get staff to look into it a little further? I guess that's what I'm looking for because we will, I guess where this kind of comes from is we will have to start reinvesting in mowers. But I don't want to reinvest in mowers if the village is kind of looking to, you know, get out of the major mowing business, you could say.
Can, can much of this be planted and native plantings of some sort or grasses or whatever?
Not really. The, the problem with some of the native plantings, they do come with their own source of problems also. But the areas that we would be doing this. I don't know. I don't know if the neighbors would necessarily like it because a lot of, a lot of the village's property does butt up to neighborhoods and what have you.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the right of way on, on Anderson. I mean, are we looking at? Between Kesslinger and thirty-eight? I mean, what are we looking at?
Yeah, I mean, that, that we have a, the same guy that, we actually don't mow that right now. The same guy that does the mowing for Shodine in the. For Shodine around his subdivision, I, we have him do our right of way. And we've actually got a pretty good price on that. So that part of it is already. I already farmed it out, you could say. Because that was taken two guys, I think it was taking. Like two guys, day and a half just to do that, or it was, it was a lot of hours to do it ourselves.
So just doing some quick math. If we look at our folks doing it, we're talking about, about eleven hundred and twenty hours of summer. Times whatever salary plus wages and what have you. So I just use a rough number of forty-five. Oops, what happened? Didn't work out so well. Forty-five. So you're looking at about fifty thousand a year right there, which is cheaper than what the estimates come in as. But when you start talking about equipment, equipment maintenance, buying new mowers every year, every other year. I would imagine we get up to that very quickly. So it looks like it's fairly close financially between the two options. I think to Phil's earlier point, the question is, if we farm this out, that leaves, you know, eleven hundred and twenty hours in the summer. For guys to do village, other public works, work other than riding a lawnmower cutting grass. So I, I would like to see that price come down to, to somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, forty-five, fifty thousand. So it's a little bit cheaper than it'll cost us anyway, if that's possible. But I, I think in the long run, having our guys working on projects around town rather than sitting on lawnmowers for two and a half days a week. Two guys, that's, that's a lot of time away from other village work that could be getting done. And that's my thoughts.
Yeah, it, the other thing is too is, the mowing can work to our advantage. I mean, not all of it, but some of it. Whether it's just the, you know, keeping a mow around for obviously the, the treatment plant, I think we keep mowing that ourselves. Because they do have downtime in the summer to, to take care of that. Whether we did public works or village hall or something like that, that's not a problem because it does work out nice. When a guy comes in, let's say, you know, let's say one thirty in the afternoon, you use this as a filler. So I don't have a real problem doing, you know, whether it's the public works and the village hall, you know, that area, those areas there. It's when you get stretched out and you're moving from, you know, well three to the, the, you know, elevated tower. And, and Prairie Valley North or going out to, you know, mow the well five and, you know, there's a lot of little patches. In this town that takes a lot of time. So it, we can keep doing business as is. I'm not necessarily against that. I just, just kind of looking for some direction. That's all.
I don't think it would hurt to go out and get prices. I mean, there's still plenty of time before you have to sign a contract or anything before the season starts.
That's what I think. I mean, we did, we've done a lot of work so far as research in the different spots, getting the, the amount of acreage to each spot. I don't have a problem doing that. We can get a couple of the, get a couple of prices and see, you know, a little, little more exact prices. I guess is what I'm looking for and see if it's worth going out for bid and just bid it out, bid out whatever we don't want to mow.
Would you use the current contract you had last year? Cause I think also if you just had just strictly mowing. And if you wanted landscape beds and everything else done, you get another contract for that. But if you just have mowing, weed whipping. You know, blowing off the sidewalks, picking up the garbage. Twenty-six times a week, twenty-eight or twenty-eight times, twenty-six times a season and just be done with it.
No, I mean, if we could, if we could get like, I think I'm kind of in agreement with Jeff. If we can get the price down. Let's say the price is around fifty or something like that where it basically. It, it's not basically worth us spending our time or whatever. I mean, we've got plenty of hydrants to paint and toe for, or a street light.
Hot holes to fill.
Hot holes. Yeah, I mean, it goes, it goes on and on. A lot of, you know, so. If that's the direction the board wants me to go, staff here, that's, that's the direction I'll go. I think what we gotta do is get, get a couple of. Prices. And then if, if the prices come in where we think they ought to be, we'll put it out, let's say, we'll put it out for an actual bid and. We can move on from there.
Anybody disagree with going down that path? I think we can at least run that rabbit in the hole and see where it takes us.
Yeah.
Well, there you go, Phil. You got some directions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Professor, professional service agreement with EEI for Tricilious Drive.
Well, we started out with. Going with the, you know, the professional service agreement. In that kind of turned into. Basically, if, you know, let's say, I guess it was back in two thousand, I guess you read the paperwork on it, was it two thousand and fourteen? I think the planning commission had a request from Laura Dempsey about. Now they, they thought it was basically unfair because in the subdivision control ordinance, basically that would require them to. Put that street in and what have you, Tricilious Drive. And so I guess what I'm looking for from the board is how exactly should we go about this? I mean, how? You know, basically according to subdivision control ordinance, they would have to really do all of the. What, they would have to pay for all the street work, the curb work or whatever, or is this something that the village, you know? It sounded like they'd like to see the village maybe meet them halfway.
I, I've got a question first.
Sure.
On, on this, how does this, how does this fall into a subdivision, that one property? The, there, if, if you ask me, there's two subdivisions there. There's Drew's old subdivision and Drew's new subdivision. Not sure that, you know, that land, does, does that qualify as a separate subdivision that falls under the ordinance? Tom, I guess that's a kind of a Tom question. I don't know, or John?
Yeah, I would say Tom question because when I read through all that from the twenty fourteen to the following board meetings after that. It was never kind of clear as to, you know, was it still their responsibility? As they built out, you know, and then how does that direct us to do what we're trying to do now?
Right. They're not really a developer, so to speak. I mean, that was Drew. Drew developed all that. I don't know. Tom, what do you, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, it, it is part of a subdivision, but I'm inclined to agree with you. They're not a developer. They're just a, a landowner.
I think the other thing I was curious about is, is I was reading through the, the notes and the minutes that, and I so appreciate. You including these and digging these up was, it seemed like the direction was. Asking staff to talk to Laura Dempsey, asking staff to investigate what can we do for shared expenses or, or share of this. I don't see anything that came back and said, this is what was decided or this is what was recommended. So it seems like this is still a real open issue that I wonder, you know, I. It, I don't know if we've given direction back to South Street Storage as to what we're looking for them to do.
Right. That's kind of what I thought they noticed too, Pat. And then too, you know, her comments that the wastewater treatment is there and. It, it just all made sense to me as to what we were trying to do. Makes sense, you know, of, of doing this improvement. It just, you know, at our last meeting, this other stuff, these other conversations just echoed in my mind, you know, is it something we should pay attention to? So I appreciate seeing these past notes, but yes, it didn't seem like anything kind of, there was really never any direction.
Sue, when you say direction was between the last meeting and now?
No, no, from like what happened there from the last meeting now. I mean, looking at this now. My questions that I had at the last meeting. From my memory of what happened back in twenty fourteen and the following board meetings afterwards. My questions were, you know, we're going to spend this money because I thought there was this going on. Looking back at all those goings on and reading those minutes makes sense to me. That it is something that the village should take care of. Does that make sense?
It, it, it does. And, and that's, you know, something that I wanted to ask, you know, you and Pat and anybody else that was on the board or even planning commission back at that time. Cause I'm, I'm trying to read through, you know, read between the lines on, on minutes. It seems like you, the, the village board was given the choice between approving A or B. And the choice was B, which basically approves the development. But with an entrance off of Tricilious at the south end and not coming in off of South Street until that was approved. And as part of that was that South Street would still be required to install landscaping along Tricilious. And install the sidewalk along Tricilious and, and whatever is up on South Street as well. That, that would be the portion that they would be required to put in, which is really no different than Drew Fraz up on South Street. He's got to put in landscaping. He's got to put in the streetlights. Those have to be energized when power gets there. He has to put in the, the sidewalk, which is actually going to be a ped path up in the area when those buildings come in. And I thought that that was the, basically the same reasoning that would apply. Or that, that we took from South Street and applied to him. And now here this is coming back again, that street's going to be improved. So that, you know, the sidewalks, the landscaping. They would all be on South Street to, to pay for. We would take care of the road and that they would take care of sidewalks and street.
I, I, I remember all those conversations and, and I, it brought back. That question that everybody's had, is, is this a subdivision? I mean, I think even back then, some of us argued that they're just landowners. I mean, they're, they're not developing. A subdivision. There's nothing been subdivided. They have one plot of land they're putting their business on. So I don't see how we can expect them to pay. Other than their own sidewalks or whatever they would have to do. Around there, but I, I, I don't know. That's just my thought. I, when this came to the board back, what was it, fourteen? Is that when we discussed?
Fourteen, yeah.
And fifteen. I was, I, I didn't understand why we were even trying to do that. It was like, this doesn't make sense. They're not a developer. But Dave Anderson at the time was pushing hard to, to get them to contribute. So I, I don't know. My opinion, we build the road, you know, if they, they want to put an entrance in, they've got to pay for their own entrance and curb cuts and whatever, but. You know, it's, it's, there's no, if there's any developer there, it's Drew, right? He developed most sides of that road. Some, a true subdivision, right? I mean, he subdivided it, developed. You know, I, I guess the argument is the village owns most of the land on the west side of the undeveloped streets. So. You know, it, it benefits us more than really anybody.
I think, I think the other concern I have is to ask. The landowner to develop the road to the. To the depth that I think it's going to need to be for all the heavy truck, truck traffic. I think that's asking them a lot. And I thought that when she came before us in fourteen and fifteen. We weren't talking about them developing the whole road on Tricilious. It was like half of Tricilious. Because the other half is village-owned police range waste. Waste water treatment plant. So it was, and then South Street would be. Again, developed at the point that Drew Fraz's property was developed. So I, I, I agree with you and I, I think we're all coming, it sounds like we're all kind of coming to the same thought of. To ask. It, it would be arch with to ask her, ask them for the extent of to develop that road.
That's, yeah, I think, I, I think you're right. I think we're kind of going that way. Does anybody not think that? No, so I think that's the direction there is that if we're going to develop it, we. No, so I think that's the direction there is, if we're going to develop it, we develop it. It's a village road, it's, there's village services there. It's, it's a benefit to the whole village. People in Cambridge benefit, the Lions Club will really benefit. I mean, imagine the traffic flow that they can get out that way. Not send people down a dirt road, I, you know, it's just, it's just a benefit to everybody.
Yeah.
Wouldn't we do it?
Yeah.
And it was, it was already zoned CM, so they didn't try and rezone. That would have, we could have imposed stuff, you know, certain limitations, but, or obligations. But, you know, it ended up being, well, they wanted to put fourteen storage units on it. There are fourteen buildings, but it was allowable under CM, so. I don't know.
How, how it was in our, even our ability to try to ask them to pay for it, but that was a few years back, so.
Yeah.
Well, we kind of all went along with it though, you know?
We did, we did.
Jeff, I would say this, the, in the subdivision control ordinance, developer is defined very broadly. Probably on, probably on purpose to have a bigger net than, than a smaller one. So as I'm looking at it, although I'm not completely crystal clear. On the, on the past action here. Uh, I think an argument can be made that that landowner who would benefit could qualify as a developer under our subdivision control ordinance. Doesn't mean you have to treat her that way, but an argument can be made.
Well, it, it's up to the board, you know, we just got to give Phil direction to either move ahead. And bring that agreement back to us, or, you know, when we've done, we've got to sit, or sit down with them and, and try to talk through. What their responsibilities are, and I, I think by the time we get done with the legal costs and everything else that might go into that. You know, uh, we're probably better off just building the road, in my opinion.
I agree. I think we should build it.
I agree, Sue. I think we just build the road.
Anybody disagree?
Road is gonna, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be all on our. Our dime, though.
Yeah.
The, will these, I mean, the sidewalks, I would assume there's going to be sidewalks, uh, the trees, will that be part of the, uh, Dempsey?
Yes, from what I read, yes.
Yeah.
It's normally the way it is. Um, I guess the, the, the other, if the village does build the road. I guess they could, I mean, when it comes, if when, let's say Dempsey decides they wanted to put in more of those buildings or something. You know, you do have a little bit of le- leverage, but. It'd be nice to know everything out in the clear first.
Well, I think we got to let them know that, that just like any, anybody that builds in, in Blackberry Creek or anywhere else, the builder has to put the sidewalks in and. And the trees and whatever along the, you know, so. If, if we're expecting that, then we need to let them know that that's what our expectation is. I, I, I don't know that we need sidewalks there or not. I, I don't know, I haven't really looked at it that closely, but. You know, that's something I guess we need to decide if we, if it's required to be there, then, then yes, and that, that's what they've got to do.
Well, when I, reading here on the, the village ordinance of June fifteen, twenty fifteen. Um, it was approved, a plan B was approved. At, for sidewalk to be installed when the road improvements are made. So there was some type of agreement approved at that time that the board voted on. And I'm assuming that Laura Dempsey's known. So I guess, you know, again, that would mean, you know, we make the road improvements now and then they'll be responsible for the sidewalk.
Right, which is normal, right?
Uh, Sue and Pat, with you guys living in that area, do you feel that those sidewalks will get used?
You know, I don't, I don't remember on southwest of Cambridge if there's sidewalks there or not.
You know what I remember about that industrial or, you know, manufacturing park back there? One of the things that I had commended, um, how it was developed was that it is kind of, there's sidewalks and it's walkable. And it makes it a nice, um, operating area. We had people in our neighborhood complain about, oh my gosh, you know, what's going to go back there? I remember when someone had emailed me worried about, um, the storage units going back there, that they didn't want that in their backyard and so on and so forth. Myself, have you walked back there? Like, I'll walk back, walk around, because it's really nice.
So are there, are there sidewalks on, on Tricilius and on, uh, Harris Street? I don't remember, to be honest.
There is there though.
And, and Welch Creek, I think there's sidewalks.
Is there? Okay.
Right, there's sidewalks there.
All right, well, then that would be a requirement, yeah.
No sidewalks in Welch Creek, it's just a bike path.
Is it?
Yeah.
Like, that's what's.
Zoning ordinance requires the, the sidewalk.
Okay. Well, I tell you, I will, it would be nice to have that road done, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess our expectation is they've got to match whatever's back there. I mean, I mean, that's, that's. Right, you know, if it's a bike path, if it's a sidewalk, if it's, it, it should all connect somehow. And, you know, to make everything walkable and rideable and whatever, so I. I, you know, maybe we need to sit down and revisit that with them, but that's the expectation, and we're going to go ahead with the road and, you know.
Jeff, my thoughts would be too, if, if Tricilius is going to be, um, you know, trafficked more and use more, which it will. Um, the sidewalk will probably be really important.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Large trucks driving up and down, it's probably not a bad idea to keep a sidewalk there.
Yeah, you don't want people walking down the street in a dump truck rolling by them and.
That, yeah, that's usually not a fun place to be.
All right, whole strip on Tricilius, basically all storage units now, particularly south of where.
They own all that land up to South Street, so that's what it would be proposed for.
Yeah, I haven't driven down Tricilius for a while, but it seems like there was a bunch of buildings. Just north of Kesslinger, you know, uh.
Yeah, the blue ones too are storage. There's blue colored ones there.
Yeah, yeah.
Different owners.
Different owners, correct.
But, but it's basically all storage units on that whole east side.
Whole side, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not all. There's a, there's a auto repair guy too there, right?
Yes, there is. Elburn Auto Repar-, Elburn Repair.
Right.
So I am looking at a satellite view of that park and I do not see a sidewalk one anywhere.
You're right, I'm looking at the same thing, Jeff, and I don't see it either.
I see a sidewalk in front of one building on Harris Street. Oh, then it's a bike path down to the corner.
Right.
And on the other side, there's nothing, there's nothing in front of. The doggy daycare or that other building next to it. It looks like we've been very, um. Very, well, I, it looks like we've let people do what, whatever they want to do, it looks like.
Well, do you remember when that, that subdivision was approved? Because I believe that came in as a PUD and it was, uh, were they granted a variance to not put in sidewalks? Because there is supposed to be a path around their stormwater on the west side.
It, it was supposed to be, I thought it was supposed to be, um, bike path.
Okay. It was not a PUD. It was not just, uh.
It was straight zoning and, uh, the administrator at the time. Uh, just said the bike path should suffice for, in lieu of a sidewalk on each side.
Yeah, there's bike path on Harris.
Close to nowhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I guess we should get our, our ducks in a row on what we're expecting them to do. Because there's nothing to the south for them to even connect to. Now, if you come up to South Street, the sidewalk looks like it ends. I can't see with the trees there. Does that sidewalk go all the way down to the end of Cambridge?
Uh, the sidewalk ends at the last house west.
Okay, that one little one that sits out there by itself?
Yes.
So, so maybe the requirement is that that sidewalk gets extended, but. I don't know, that's something, staff, we're going to have to figure this out because. We got bike paths that go to nowhere, we got, and the rest of the subdivision, there's nothing. You know, I.
There isn't.
We got to do what makes sense here, I mean, you know, we can't go back now and require. All these other built, buildings to put in sidewalks at this point.
Always running up with a sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah, that's what you got on Hera, in front of two buildings and that's it, three buildings. And it doesn't go anywhere else. And there's nothing on the opposite, on the east side of Hera, and there's nothing on Tricilius on either side. So, I don't know, we, before we sit down with, with the Dempseys, we got to figure out what are, you know, what we're expecting of them. I will leave that to staff to, to come up with that decision, but I think the consensus of the board here is to go ahead and, and, and pave the road. So that's, for now, let's focus on that and then we'll, staff can come up with a plan for. Sidewalks, bike paths, whatever the right thing to do there is, and then I, I'd say we'd have to run it by Bill to make sure we're. On sound footing, whatever requirement that might be. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Way back, Tricilius was meant to be the overpass. So we looped Anderson Road and Tricilius, there would be a loop around the village. When the forest reserve bought the land north, that ended that.
Okay.
That was the original plan, though.
That looks like it would have been a good plan. All right. Anything else on that one? If not, we'll move on to the ten shared poli- policing, ten shared, uh, must be getting late, ten shared policing principles. Say that fast three times.
Okay, um, I'll try to move this along as quickly as possible here. Uh, I presented to the board, uh, what I'd like to do is have us adopt by resolution the ten shared principles. This is a document as I included in the, the, the brief narrative and the, uh. Narrative copied from the Illinois Chiefs Association. In two thousand eighteen, this was a, uh, document that was put together in combination with the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. And the, uh, Illinois chapter of the NAACP. A lot of communities have adopted this, um, the Illinois Chiefs is really, um. Extending out to the membership right now, asking all of the members to really consider. Uh, this document again for those agencies that have not adopted it. Um, I think it goes right in line with everything that we have tried to do. It aligns with all of our internal departmental policies. Uh, that we have through Lexipol for, um. All of, you know, obviously we're going to treat everybody fair, we're going to treat everybody with respect. And, um, everything that is mentioned in these ten shared principles are included in our. Departmental policies. Um, I also included in here in reference to the principle number four, the six pillars, I went ahead and, and copied those and put those in. Again, because it only talks about the first, but obviously it's all the things that we already do. Um, that we have said we are going to do by our policy, and I think it would go a long way. Obviously with what happened this last summer, things got really heated. Um, we still have some work that, that's going to be due on that, but I believe that if the village were to adopt these. Shows a really a good faith effort on our part of what the village of Elburn is going to stand for. And that we are going to be here to support everybody, our residents, anybody that visits us. And that everybody's going to be treated with respect and with the values that we all share. You know, I've listed a few of the communities around us that have already adopted this. There are over two hundred and sixty, I think, right now. Um, and including the ILMC, I, ILCMA, and also the IML. Which we align with, and they've already adopted it. Um, so just about that, you know, some of our neighboring communities that have adopted it and, um. Looking forward to, uh, being able to say that Elburn also believes in this and that we would adopt this as a. Uh, official member of the, the list of communities in support of this.
Well, pillars make sense to me. Anybody think we shouldn't adopt this?
No, we should.
Makes sense.
I see a lot of heads going up and down, so. I guess we'll bring this back to a board meeting, then chief, for us to formally vote on it.
Yes, I think, uh, we can try to have it ready for the next board meeting to officially vote on it and accept it, whether we. Uh, want to do it by, uh, uh, actually passing a resolution to support it, or just simply, uh, vote to support. And become a member or agency with the Illinois Chiefs in support of the ten shared principles. I know which direction the board would rather go with it. Or if there's a preference.
I think we should do a resolution by a separate vote. Instead of doing it on consent, that way we've got something that ties back.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that.
Okay, we're kind of getting that, uh, together for the next meeting then. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All right, thanks, chief. Uh, Doug, it looks like you've got a few here coming up.
Yeah, I do, I'm going to share my screen again.
Got a couple hardcore scouts hanging in there, it looks like.
So the next thing we want to look at tonight, are you seeing my screen there?
Yes.
All right, I, I, just very briefly, we have started the process. For building the budget for the next fiscal year. The next fiscal year starts on May one. Uh, so this timetable that you see here. Are the steps that we go through and for the most part, the, the general timing on where. When each step needs to take place. And the village board either as the board proper or as the committee. Of the whole is involved, and I'm, I'm not going to go over this line by line. But you'll see here when some of these steps involve the board or the committee of the whole, you'll. How, on here, or you'll see village board on here. And basically, that's all I want to review with you on this, unless there are any questions. Okay, let's go on. The next thing we want to look at is the current benefit package. So this document. Details the current benefit package for retirement. We have social security, Medicare, I M R F. And the I M R F SLEP. And also the police PIN plan. Over on this part of the document, this tells you what percent the employee pays. This is what percent the village pays. And this is what was in the current year's budget. Not next year's budget, but what's in the current year's budget for, for that benefit. So the retirement is at the beginning. Here in the middle are the group health insurance plans. We currently now offer two health insurance plans, both through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Uh, our current total budget for health plans is three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Uh, then we have a supplemental plan that includes life insurance, short-term disability and accidental death. Uh, the employee pays nothing towards that, the village pays a hundred percent of that. The cost is for the current year is fourteen thousand four fifty. The dental plan, the. Village pays a hundred percent of the employee portion of the premium. Then if the employee has any dependents insured, the employee picks up the cost of. The dental portion of that plan. And our total budget for that is thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars this year. Moving on to the HRA, the Health Reimbursement Account, uh, the employee pays nothing. Uh, the village pays either, excuse me, five hundred dollars per employee. Or two thousand dollars per employee, depending on if they have single. Or two thousand dollars per employee, depending on if they have single coverage or family coverage. And our total budget for that is twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. The Health Savings Account or the H S A. The employee pays nothing towards that. The village pays eleven hundred dollars per employee per year. Uh, our current budgeted cost on that is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Then we have a plan called the Employee Assistance Plan. And that's that's not a premium based plan. That is an a session based plan. So th- they offer various services. If an employee wants to take advantage of. The services offered by this group, then we pay per session. We pay. A hundred and fifty-five dollars per session. The employee pays nothing. Uh, our total cost that we budgeted for the current year is a little over three thousand dollars. So th- these are the benefits. We got retirement benefits, group health insurance benefits. H R A, H S A, E A P. Our total. Bottom line for those services is a little over a million dollars for for the current year. Now, the, un- unless we make changes, this is what we'll be offering to the employees in the new budget year. In fiscal year twenty-two. Are there any questions about the current benefit plan? Okay, let's move on. Um. The next. Plan. Is the, and we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this tonight, because this is the last. Version of the capital improvement plan that you saw. Uh, so there haven't been any changes or updates to it. But as part of the budget planning process for the new year, we go through this plan. We update it to to make it current, and then we add another year on to the end of it, so that that. Here that we're gonna add on, but is two thousand twenty-six, so that there's nothing contained in that column yet. So as part of the planning process, the uh, the department heads and I. Uh, spend a lot of time to bring this up to date, and then. It it looks five years ahead, and it's used as a good tool, not just for the current year. Or for the upcoming budget year, but on planning for five years out and. It's it's a good tool. It took a long time to develop this because we're. We're all used to the here and now and doing things that need to be done today or or getting ready for the things that need to be done tomorrow and. Uh, this is kind of a different mode where you have to sit down and envision. A year ahead of time, two years ahead of time, five years ahead of time. So that's that's what this plan is all about. Uh, there's several pages to it. It goes by department. Uh, that's all we're going to to do with that tonight is just. An awareness. Uh, we will get into the. In quite a bit of detail as as the planning process goes on. Then the last thing is the. Um, proposed. Performance based raises for the new year. Now, this is for non-union employees. Union employees' salary adjustments and and raises are based. In their collective bargaining agreement. So what we've done now for the past several years. Is base uh raises on performance, and that's based on. Two prongs to that. Part of that is the inflation part of that. And that's based on the CPI. Uh, and the the CPI for the Chicago area for the last twelve months. Is zero point eight percent. Now, that's the the most recent number we have is from November of twenty twenty. So this is a very current number, zero point eight percent. Last year, uh, I have that number right in front of me. Last year, I believe that was. One point eight percent. So the CPI is down from what it was a year ago. So that's one component. The other component is the performance component. And what we've been using now for a while is if the employee greatly exceeds. Expectations, we add two percent. If exceeds expectations is one and a half percent, meets expectations is at one percent. Uh, does not meet expectations but is improving, then it's zero percent. And does not meet expectations and termination is likely zero percent. So then when they come are combined. For greatly exceeds expectations, then you've got the point eight percent inflation component to the CPI. Add to that the two percent performance component, and then you come up with a two point eight percent. And then uh for exceeds expectations, it'd be two point three percent. The next level is one point eight percent, zero point eight percent, and zero percent. Um, so what this helps us do, it helps helps us do our planning in in as we are building the budget for the next year. And any questions about that? All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any other business to come before the committee of the whole?
Hey, Jeff, I just had a question for you and the board. Um. So far as you want us to put that PSA agreement back on for the village board, uh, what is that, the fourth or whatever? After the first of the year, and then in the meantime, work on getting some ideas so far as, I guess what I'm looking at is. We gotta kind of, if we're gonna do that road, we should kind of keep things kind of moving so that we can get out the bed.
I think everybody was fine with the PSA at the last board meeting. The question was, what are we doing about the Dempseys?
Okay.
I think we don't know. I mean, do we require sidewalks, bike path? You know, I I think. Board, the the staff's gonna have to come up with a with a position on that. That we're gonna take back to the Dempseys, but as far as the road goes, I think everybody's nodding their head up and down. Let's get this road going.
I just, I didn't know if we should put it back in front of the board and keep, you know, I didn't know if you need to vote on it.
Well, I'm gonna put the PSA on consent if everybody's okay with that.
I guess that's 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 the, that's where I'm going, if you want to.
Anybody disagree with putting the PSA on consent? No? All right, we'll put the PSA on consent, and then in the meantime, staff can figure out what the right plan is for sidewalks, bike paths.
Okay, that's just, that's what I needed. Thank you.
All right, anything else to come before the committee of the whole? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Move by trustee Madi, second.
I'll second.
Chris.
My trustee Phalik, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. I know it was a long night, but we got a lot of great stuff done tonight, so thank you all.
Look forward on YouTube.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Bye.
Go and have me some fruitcake.
Nobody got another one, got the memo.
I'm wearing mine.
I didn't get the sweater memo.
Get the memo, see?
And I got an ugly one I could be wearing right now, too.